Okay, we're calling the City of Livingston Planning Board meeting to order at 5:33. Let's start with roll call and our approval of minutes. Taya.
Present.
Tori. Shannon.
Present.
Melissa.
Present.
And Jim Barrett is absent and Stacy Jovic is absent. And Jesse is here and Deputy City Planner Matthew Menard. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve last meeting's minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve last month's minutes.
There a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, we'll go with Taya's second. All in favor, let's go through. Taya.
Four.
Tori.
Four.
Shannon.
Four.
Melissa.
Four.
And I am four, so that motion passes. All right, let's look at the first agenda item. And is that you, Matthew? Oh, actually, so we don't have any public comment, right? We don't have any members of the public here. Okay. Matthew, do you want to kick us off with the first item on our agenda? Discussion of Planning Board Responsibilities vis a vis preliminary plat applications.
Sure. So you all have asked a few times for just basic training on how to deal with subdivision applications. So I'm going to go through. I have a very short presentation on just sort of basics. And then state law and sort of how you handle subdivision applications. It's very wordy, so I apologize for that. And afterwards, we can have some question and answer time. And hopefully, I can answer any questions you may have. So let me just quickly pull that up. So basics of subdivision. Under Montana state law, basically, it's the Montana Subdivision and Planning Act. Anytime you divide a parcel under 160 acres or a quarter section, because of quarter sections are often somewhat old. Sometimes they're not quite 160 acres. It's considered a subdivision. So basically, anytime you're creating a new parcel that's under 160 acres, it's a subdivision. There are exemptions to these rules. Really, the two that people see the most and are used primarily in rural areas to create new parcels are what are called famine transfers and agricultural exemptions. Basically, creating a parcel just for ag use. So basically, anytime in the city, someone is going to create a new parcel or an additional parcel, they're going to have to go through subdivision review. You'll see, well, you probably won't see them, but the Chair of the Commission will often see subdivision exemptions where people are just moving the boundary line around. That is not considered a subdivision. That's one of those exemptions under state law. So you can change your lots around. You just can't create new ones, basically, under state law. There are three types of subdivisions. The first minor, which is far fewer parcels created from a single tract of record that hadn't been subdivided. The subdivision and planning act is from the 70s. So basically, it hasn't been subdivided since the 70s. Subsequent minor, same number, five or fewer parcels, but the tract had been previously subdivided. The subdivision regulations treat this as a major subdivision and then a major subdivision which is six or more parcels. There's not a lot of differences in review between minor and major subdivisions. Major subdivisions have a couple more seminal requirements, slightly greater environmental things like that. And subdivisions do have to comply, not just with the subdivision regulations, but all of the city code. And that includes. They both have the same process. Both major and minor have the same process. You're required to do a pre-application meeting, which is basically you talk to staff to see any red flags. Will make suggestions on things that are concerning to us or that we think the subdivider should consider before they submit an application. After the pre-application, that's when the subdivider would submit an application. There's several steps in the review process for that application. And the days in parentheses you see here are the days we are allowed under state law before we have to give the subdivider an answer on each step of these through the subdivision process essentially. So there's element review, which is make sure that everything that's required for subdivision review is included in the packet or in the application. Sufficiency review just ensures that all the elements basically are sufficient or detailed enough to review. And then after that, we will review the application for consisting with subregs and other city code and send it out to outside agencies, often agencies like Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, Fish, Wildlife and Parks, State Resort Preservation Office potentially. And depending on where it is, MDT, MRL, people like that. After that application review is completed, staff will bring staff reports and the application to the planning board. The planning board's job is to make a recommendation on the subdivision and suggest conditions of approval to the City Commission. After that, it does go through to the City Commission and they will make the final decision on the preliminary plat. Once a preliminary plat is approved and those conditions are approved, those can't be changed by the city in any way unless that's requested by the subdivider. So basically, those conditions are final once preliminary plat approval is granted because at that point, the subdivider can begin work on the infrastructure included in the subdivision and other requirements of the subdivision. Preliminary plats are allowed to be approved for up to three years under state law and under our code. In that time period, the infrastructure and the other conditions of approval need to be met for final plat. So basically, once you get preliminary plat approval, subdividers will start doing things like building roads, sidewalks, street lighting, and you're escaping them. They've been required, parks and trails, things like that. The City Commission can grant an extension to that approval for periods of one year. So for example, if something happens, we saw a lot when the economy crashed. If you can't get the roads done or you lost your financing or something like that, the City Commission can say, okay, you have an extra year to get this infrastructure down and make sure you meet the the conditions of approval. There is a phasing act under state law. It's a mess. We're not going to talk about it. For your purposes, it's a preliminary plat. There's a few more supplemental requirements, scheduling, some other things that you don't really have to worry about. We just need to make sure they're in there when they do a phase development. Key thing to note with phase developments is that they can be approved for up to 20 years rather than three. But every time that they start a new phase, they have to go in front of the City Commission. And the City Commission can place new conditions on those subdivisions if prevailing conditions in the area have changed substantially. So it's more of a commission issue than an issue for you all to deal with. It's not a lot of people do them because the way it was written has caused conflict with the EQ. And it's just more. So after all, the infrastructure and all the conditions of preliminary plat are finished. They move on to what's called final plats. Basically, you submit an application showing that you've met your conditions of approval and all the infrastructure is in place. Staff reviews the materials, make sure that we agree that you've met the conditions of approval and that the infrastructure's been put in properly. And after that, the City Commission approves or denies that final plat. And then it's sent to the equipment department to be reported. And then those parcels are officially parcels and can be owned separately and transferred like legal parcels. This step is usually pretty simple and quick. There's not a lot of review. You're basically just making sure that they've done that checklist of conditions. And this wouldn't go to the planning board. It's just City Commission. So the criteria that you all will be making your recommendation on are listed in the subregs and state law and in the growth policy. And the growth policy does a good job of giving some examples of what types of things you can look at with these criteria. So it's worthwhile looking at that. If you get a chance, it's on page 94 and 95. But the criteria are impact on agriculture, ditches, local services, natural environment, wildlife, wildlife habitat, and public health and safety. State survey requirements, which you're not going to have to worry about. The subdivision regulations, which staff will evaluate before it's brought to you to make sure that they meet. Other city regulations, which again, the staff will evaluate. Those zoning, the new infrastructure standards, floodplain requirements, things like that. The growth policy, which again, staff will evaluate and give you a staff report for. But it's probably the biggest item along with the first bullet point there that the planning board will be evaluating, providing physical and legal access. So you have to have road access to every parcel you subdivide in the state. It's pretty clear whether or not a subdivider has done that and then providing utility easements. So you need to make sure that every parcel has the ability to have utilities connected to it. And that, again, is something that's pretty clear, but will be evaluated by staff. Specifically, public works is helpful in that process. So what is your evaluation process? What's your role? Again, you make a recommendation to the City Commission on preliminary plat applications, including the commission or the conditions of approval. That recommendation is non-binding and the City Commission can accept or not accept all of the recommendations you make. And they can also add additional conditions or remove conditions as they see fit. Staff will provide the application and staff report to the planning board for you to evaluate. Staff report will include proposed findings and analysis of those criteria that were just listed. It will also provide an analysis on the growth policy. And we will include in the packet any comments, any letters we get from outside agencies that we would send the application to. We staff will always provide a list of proposed conditions of approval as well. And so it's your role to evaluate the application materials in the staff report to determine if they are in agreement with the proposed findings of fact and conditions in the staff report. So basically, do you agree with the staff report or not? And we will talk about that quickly here. So this is an example of a zoning staff report. The subdivision staff report will look very similar. So basically, staff will list what the criteria is. And then there'll be a list of comments and analysis on those criteria for you to look over. Obviously, you all can make your own analysis and are totally fine to disagree with us, which I will go over shortly as well. So basically, when you review an application, you are strictly limited to evaluating that subdivision based on the criteria. You can't go beyond that. So there's, really, the planning board should not be discussing items that are not included in the criteria for subdivision approval under state law as those can't be used to evaluate the application. Crucially, public comment is not part of the evaluation criteria. Public comment is really to gather more information that may not be apparent to staff or the planning boards, you know, sort of a local knowledge or things that the neighbors may know about that wouldn't be apparent through the application process or items like that. Sometimes, public comment doesn't pertain to the criteria and isn't particularly useful to the board. It should, that should be noted by the planning board. The public not liking it or liking the subdivision application really isn't grounds for approval or denial of subdivision. So you can't evaluate a subdivision based on what the public thinks of it. As I just talked about a little bit, you are always welcome to disagree with the proposed findings of facts or the staff report or proposed staff conditions. You should always explain your reasoning based on those evaluation criteria. And if you are adding or removing conditions, you really do need to explain how it makes the subdivision more consistent with the criteria. In your evaluation, you need to explain how you're evaluating and why you're making decisions. Not only for the City Commission's benefit, but in case there's a lawsuit or if, to give the subdivider more, basically more information on why you're making this decision and how it meets state law. And that's really how you're evaluating subdivision is based on state law and our subdivision regulations if they're going to be consisting in state law. When you are making a motion, the planning board member that makes a motion should go through each of the criteria and say how they believe or do not believe the subdivision meets that criteria. If the motion maker agrees with the analysis in the staff report, you can just say that and you don't have to go through all of those as those will all be included in the staff reports. And you should include whether you adopt them in conditions and any proposed conditions, any proposed changes to those conditions. That's going to be really important as we move through and evaluate any application is making sure that how we evaluate it and how it does or doesn't meet those criteria is made very clear on the record. Really, your role is to make those findings of fact and make that recommendation to the City Commission. The criteria are subjective. There's no hard and fast rules for any of them. As you've seen, they're all pretty broad. So the whole planning board doesn't need to agree on the analysis of the subdivision. That's what the board discussion is for. If you have a different reasoning or you disagree with the motion, you should state that on the record and state your analysis based on that. You don't need to come all to an agreement on how it does or doesn't meet the criteria. You can all have your own analysis. It just needs to be made clear if you are disagreeing with the analysis in the motion. State law does have some constraints on how you can make decisions. Again, those criteria are the main constraints. You can only look at those. There are a few items in state law that don't, you can't deny subdivision based solely on, that being the growth policy, you can't make any land use decisions based solely on the growth policy impacts on educational services. So if we get a comment from the schools saying they don't have capacity, you can't deny a subdivision based solely on that. Or the parcels being in the wildland urban interface, which is basically a fire issue. Those can be conditioned to be mitigated, but you can't deny a subdivision based specifically on that. Another constraint, you could call it, or basically, state law favors approval of subdivisions with conditions to mitigate impacts rather than denying subdivisions. It's pretty clear about this. So your first step of action should be to evaluate if the issue that you believe where it doesn't meet the criteria can be mitigated through conditions of approval. And for example, you know, health and safety, if you think it's going to cause some sort of safety issue, maybe with a road layout, is there a way to condition the roads so that they're safer rather than denying the whole subdivision based on that safety issue? Another requirement of state law is that anytime you are going to place a condition, you have to consult with the subdivider. Often, this is just asking the subdivider if the condition is acceptable to them. You don't have to. If it doesn't have to be acceptable for them to, for you to place the condition on the subdivision, you just have to consult with them. So when you are making a motion, if you are adding a condition or changing a condition, you need to ask the subdivider if they're okay with that. Often, subdividers will say, well, we'd rather it be worded like this. And there can be some discussion on changing that conditions. Like we're making sure the motion is consistent with what makes sense for the subdivider and gets to the point you're trying to make. And again, once a preliminary plat is approved, we can't change it. So applying conditions that would lead to changes in that preliminary plat aren't effective. Any changes the planning board would like to see should be recommended to the City Commission. Now, we had this issue with parks and trails recently, which is why I brought it up a couple of times, where we had a subdivision that was conditioned basically on the subdivider working with the Parks and Trails Commission on parklands. And the Parks and Trails Board is now asking for them to put a trail there and they don't really want to do it. We can't require them to put a trail. We can't add that condition to put a trail in after the fact. So it really needs to be done at the latest, at the City Commission stage, not conditioning something to say, well, the subdivider has to work with the Parks and Trails Commission on parkland. That doesn't really give anyone any teeth or any guidance on what to do. Now, the subdivider may want to do that and may be willing to do that, but if you want it to be a hard and fast rule, it needs to be a condition of approval and it needs to be very specific. So just a quick summary and then this very wordy presentation is over. Your role is to make a recommendation on the preliminary plat application to the City Commission. Subdivisions are only evaluated on those criteria that we talked about earlier, which are included in the subdivision regulations. They're also in the growth policy and they're also in state law. Staff will always provide an analysis of the criteria. Again, disagreeing with staff or other planning board members in your evaluation is totally fine. You just need to explain why you're disagreeing. Do be respectful. Obviously, you all are great at that from what I've seen through the growth policy process. State law does preference approval with mitigation through conditioning rather than denial. So just be aware of that. It's not something you have to worry about too much. And preliminary plats cannot be approved, cannot be changed once they are approved. And that's generally going to be a three-year approval. So just be aware of that when you condition something. It should be very specific on what you want to see. And don't expect changes to the application submitted to you after the preliminary plat is approved. Once it's approved, it's approved and it's probably not going to change unless the subdivider wants to change something and then they're going to have to come back and ask for that change. And that is all I have. So any questions you have or anything you would like me to discuss further, I'm happy to do that.
I have one question, Michael. Michael, Matthew, sorry. And it just, it's just, I'm curious. So the first slide said parcels that are subdividing five or fewer parcels, like, do need to go through a subdivision review, correct? So, and this is just because I happen to live next door to somebody who is, they have six city lots and they're subdividing it at least into one, two. And I, that never came before the planning board. So with that, what is the, based on what I just saw on your slide, it seems like it should have. But do you have an idea as to why it didn't?
Yeah, so there's two very common things that happen. If you have six city lots, you can move those boundary lines around at will. It's what's called a subdivision exemption. The Chair of the City Commission signs those plats and then they get recorded. So those don't go through review. They're exempt from review under state law. The other thing that it sounds like you might be talking about is if you have six, you can combine those lots to create less than six. It's called a lot aggregation. Those are also exempt from subdivision review under state law. Again, they get signed by the Chair of the City Commission. Basically, the process for that is you submit, well, now we have a very short application form and a very low fee and you submit that to us. We make sure that the plat meets all the requirements and has all the required items on it. It gets given to the Chair to sign and then it gets reported and those lines are changed. So they probably didn't create any new parcels. They either just moved lines around or they created less parcels. They didn't have to go through subdivision review. Really, the only time you're going through review is if you're creating new parcels for sale. So if they had six parcels and all of a sudden they had eight, that's going to have to go through subdivision review.
Okay, so he had six city lots and is selling half as three, developing half of the latter and then, okay, all right, cool. Just curious. I don't have any other questions. Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I ask Matthew a question?
Of course, go ahead.
All right. Thanks for the presentation, Matthew. It's really helpful. So in kind of honor of Frank O'Connor. Frank, and especially given the history of our area with Lewis and Clark, the indigenous people. This was before your time, but it's, it's my understanding that there is an evaluation criteria that does pertain to historical features, say, on a property. And I know Frank was asking the planning board at the time if there was a way that we could reach out to the state. And actually, and I think we discussed this and Melissa could refresh my memory, but I thought we were actually talking about having kind of a list of all the significant archaeological sites and anything that would, was, was on the state's historical radar within the city limits so we could actually make, I think, good decisions based on a lot of the, maybe some of the hearsay that we hear, like, this has been a native antelope breeding ground for centuries and maybe that's truly not the case. So I hope all my rambling is making sense, but it, it applies to basically reaching out to the state. I think there's a nominal fee. And if, and if we as a board could get like this master list of significant places, be it the Bozeman Trail, locate, you know, exact location or a Lewis and Clark camping site or an indigenous site like on Sheep Mountain, is that a possibility for us to do before we maybe go through our first process as a board?
That's certainly something we can do. I know the growth policy recommends it. It's not a specific criteria, but it is part of the growth policy that we evaluate stored items. Often, subdivisions get sent to SHPO and they'll tell you whether or not they believe there's any historic features on the property. So that's something that should occur with any subdivision. You should have a letter in your packet saying whether or not there are. And that can be conditioned on protecting those. There's obviously state and federal laws around disturbing archaeological sites as well, which we don't have to worry about, but the developer will have to worry about it. They dig up a grave site, there's some pretty substantial stuff they're going to have to do before they can continue work. Of course, they have to report that, which not all developers may do. But if they want to avoid huge amounts of trouble, they probably will. So it is something we can look at in, in looking at consistency with the growth policy because it is included in there. And there is a recommendation in the growth policy to create that map. I think it was of historic features, cultural significant features and environmental features. That's probably beyond the scope of what SHPO is going to do, but it's something the city could certainly pursue. I'm sure there are various groups around that would be happy to do that. Maybe we could wrangle some MSc students through, at least through the environmental feature side of it. But it's definitely something the city should look at, potentially with the strategic planning process that will hopefully happen soon.
Okay. But I guess with, obviously with you at the helm of this process, we're not going to be providing comments and reviewing a subdivision application unless you've checked the box on, say, that SHPO requirement. Because I, I, I haven't been on the planning board for a very long time, but I have a feeling that that letter has maybe slipped through the cracks in some of the, some previous subdivision approvals that have occurred in the city.
There's no requirement, so it's kind of at the discretion of the planning department at this point. You know, if we were doing a two lot split in a residential neighborhood, there's probably not a whole lot of reason to send it to SHPO. Outside of the city, there's more reason, especially if there's historic features, things like barns or old agricultural buildings on the site as well. But general practice would be to send it to them and make sure they don't have any concerns.
Okay. And then another question that I think I know the, well, I know the answer to, but I'm just going to ask it. So this staff report that has kind of the seven, seven or eight criteria. There's, there's no way of rewording that criteria. That's straight out of state law as far as the findings of fact.
So I don't know if you remember this because it was probably 10 months ago, might have been a year ago. We talked about this a little bit and Courtney and I had put together a memo for you. Basically, you can add criteria to those set of criteria, but you have to have a study to do so. So it's possible if we want to discuss additions to that that aren't included in the growth policy, we could do that. We'd have to, the city would have to decide to fund some sort of study to show that those criteria pertain to health, safety and welfare.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. Just a quick one about process, Matthew. So with the conditions, you said the developer, you consult with the developer on it. Does that happen then during, during the meeting?
Yeah, so say if someone were to want to make a motion to add a condition. You know, for example, we want to add a condition to put a right turn lane in here, something like that. You'd have to ask the applicant, the subdivider, if they're amenable to that. Now, they don't have to be amenable to that for you to add the condition, but state law requires that you at least consult with them. And that happens during the period now, basically through the motion process. Or if you're having a discussion and you're thinking about adding that condition, it's always a good time to say, hey, I'm thinking about adding this condition. What is the subdivider's request?
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Matthew? Melissa?
First, I was wondering, can you give some other examples of conditions besides like the turn lane?
Yeah, often they have to do with infrastructure or comments we get from outside agencies. So like what I saw in Galton County law, we would send all of our subdivisions to Fish, Wildlife and Parks and they sort of have a standardized document that they look at for conditions. And there'd be, they would request conditions like no grazing of sheep on the property, wildlife-friendly fencing, potentially some conditions on distance from riparian areas or watercourses, items like that. There's obviously the standard set of infrastructure conditions that would be required with the subdivision. items like that. There's obviously the standard set of infrastructure conditions that would be required with the subdivision regulations that we would place on them, making sure they got proper approval from D Q, put in all their infrastructure, street lighting, et cetera. Because those are in the infrastructure standards, we don't technically need to condition those because they have to do them anyway. But often those conditions are gonna be driven from, from outside agencies or from something like, well, your property is identified in the Trails and Active Transportation Plan, is having a trail across it, so we're gonna require that you put a trail or we're gonna require that you build a trail here. Things that wouldn't necessarily be required, but our planning documents show that we should have. And often it is things like trails, protecting wetlands, things like that.
Thanks. And then you said that, so once, once a subdivision has been through the preliminary plat approval, the planning board's done with it. But if it's being developed in phases, which often they are, if it's a bigger subdivision, those phases go before the city commission for final plat approval. And at that point, you can add conditions, but it has to be through the city commission?
So it's a bit complicated. Like what we've seen, for example, North Town or Discovery Vista, they technically aren't doing a phase development, even though it is a phase development, because they're doing one preliminary plat at a time. So the planning board would actually see each preliminary plat, even though they're kind of like phases, they're going through the whole process every time. With a phase development, basically they're required, they submit the whole development as a preliminary plat and say, we're gonna do it in these chunks. And every time they come back with a new phase, they have to go in front of the city commission. And the city commission will analyze basically if the conditions in the area have changed and there's needs to be any addition to conditions based on health and safety. And state laws somewhat restrict, you can't just really-nilly add conditions. It's pretty restrictive on change, changing conditions. So often it's again gonna be things like, there's been a substantial increase in traffic in the area, or the city has found a need for streetlights, or snow removal, or water, or something along those lines. It's not gonna be like, well, the Parks and Trails Commission came in after the fact and told us that they wanted a park here, so now you have to do a park here. That's not gonna be allowed. It's gonna be things that you will see that potentially change. So if we had a phase development and another subdivision came in right next door and dropped a whole bunch of traffic onto their road, okay, well now we maybe need a turn lane, or we need you to do a traffic impact study, or we need you to update your traffic impact study, things like that. But it's, it's pretty restrictive.
So you said that North Town is, I, I felt like the, and I could be mistaken, because we voted on a lot at the city commission. I remember early on, we voted on a phase, early on my time at the commission, we voted on a phase. So you're saying that that phase would have come before the planning board, before it went to the commission?
Yeah, so North Town probably actually predates the phasing act, so it's relatively new. I don't remember what county it was, I, but there was a county that I believe approved this subdivision for 99 years, because it was phased. And so that caused the cascading state law change, basically, because nobody thought that was acceptable. So North Town has presented as if they're a phase development, they've sort of shown their plan the whole way through. They're not beholden to those future phases. Basically, they're applying, they're calling them phases, but they're applying for preliminary plat every time. So they go through the whole process every time. Whereas a phase development, you get approval for all the phases at the same time, and then just every time you initiate the next phase, you have to go back to the commission and tell them that you're doing that, and then get final plat approval on all of them. And including in a, under the current state law for phase developments, you have to put a schedule for your phasing. So something like H R K again, came in before that law and presented as a phase development, which is, I think, why they were given that really long approval time, was to get those phases done one time, basically a piece at a time, but they would have approval for the whole development when it was. So when that preliminary plat was approved, all those lots were approved, and then they were given a really long approval time to get it all done. The new phasing essentially operates like that, but before they start the next phase, they have to come ask the commission if conditions have changed essentially, and then they're allowed to start the next phase.
And then, and then if I'm understanding correctly, like, there has to be some amount of work that was done, like, a developer can't ask for a long period of time and then do nothing, and then at the very end, ask for an extension if they haven't like done any work on infrastructure development? Is that, is that what the code says?
Kind of. They could do that. They're supposed to get, stick to a schedule. They're supposed to have a schedule, but schedule can change, so they'd have to ask to change their schedule. It's, that's a tough one, but something like H R K probably shouldn't happen under the phasing acts, just because you would give them, you've basically, under the phasing act, you can give them up to a 20-year approval to get those phases done. But essentially, the first phase shouldn't be given more than a three-year approval. So they could ask for an extension for each phase, but asking for an extension for the whole development is probably unlikely and probably wouldn't be acceptable. If there were extreme extenuating circumstances, it may happen.
And I don't, I'm not even thinking of H R K specifically. I guess I'm more thinking of like, this is why there's time limits on phases, because conditions can change. So that's why there's like this three, this three-year buffer, because presumably after a certain amount of time, the conditions contain, change enough in a community that, that the original plan might need to be relevant to that that slice of time. Is that, am I like generally understanding it correctly? I'm not applying it to any specific example.
Yeah, basically the reason that they have to go back to the commission and say, hey, we're initiating the phase, have conditions change, is because they can get that longer timeframe with a phase development. So that can be analyzed. What we can't do with a phase development is once that whole preliminary plat is approved with all the phases, those entitlements are set. So you can't take lots away from them. You can't say, oh, you can't do phase four now, because conditions have changed. So the reason a developer will do a phase development and go through that harder process is because it grants them entitlements for the whole development that you can't take away. If you do it the way North Town is doing it, or Discovery Vista is doing it, every time you get, come in for preliminary plat at that next phase, so you could get, you know, three out of four phases done, the fourth phase, we can say, well, we don't have road capacity anymore. We don't have water and sewer capacity anymore. Your phase is denied. And then they can, they can't finish their development, basically. So those entitlements aren't guaranteed. So the point of a phase development is to guarantee your entitlements, but spread the cost of infrastructure over a much greater period of time, because the infrastructure is what's expensive. So you build a chunk of infrastructure, you sell all the lots, you build the next chunk using the money from the sold lots, and you do it over again until you've built out the whole development. It's really used for, for large scale.
Do we, so is it like, would you expect to see it like in larger communities in Montana and less often in a town our size then?
Not necessarily. I mean, Discovery Vista, North Town are both relatively good-sized developments. They both, I think at Final Build, that will have well over 100 lots. So it wouldn't be that unusual for us to see it if we continue with that development pattern. It's more so on the size of the development, not on the size of the community. You'll often see it in rural areas and counties as well, just because you have huge parcels of, of land that are getting developed. So we saw it in Big Sky. Belgrade saw it outside of Belgrade, because you'll have 160 acres that'll all get developed, and you don't have a developer that has two, three, four, or five million dollars to do infrastructure all at once, so they'll spread that cost out over time. Galton Heights outside of Belgrade on Jack Rabbit is a great example of that, where they basically did little chunks of a circle over a 10-year period.
So I'm confused, like, why wouldn't a developer always do that? Like, what's the benefit of breaking it up into phases and going through the whole thing every single time?
If you, so if you have a small-scale development and you're gonna do all the infrastructure and you have that capital to do it, it's just easier to do it all at once. And you, your financing window is shorter, so you pay back less interest on, on the debt you're taking out. If there are reasons that subdivisions will basically do their subdivisions in chunks, it's, it's an easier process. You, D Q was really, really struggling with the phasing act, because basically there's two subdivision laws in Montana, the Subdivision of Planning Act, which is what you all deal with, and then the Subdivision and Sanitation Act, which is what D Q deals with. And so the Phasing Act applied to the Subdivision of Planning Act, but didn't apply to the Subdivision and Sanitation Act. So D Q didn't know how to handle phase development, so that was causing problems. So basically, D Q would only approve, for those of you that don't know, and I'm using a lot of acronyms, Department of Environmental Quality would only approve water and sewer and stormwater for the whole phase development. And a lot of engineers and subdivision didn't want to do that, so they were doing them one at a time. Because of the way Montana state law is set up, which preferences approvals, it's not that big of a risk to do them one at a time, and it's an easier process, and you know that those conditions aren't gonna change, and you don't have that any sort of schedule. So it is easier to not do the phasing act and just do it in little chunks, as long as you're not concerned that you're gonna lose your entitlements at some point.
I know that was a lot of questions, but I really appreciate you taking time to answer that. The last, I mean, we've gone through this process before as a board, and we didn't all have the same background information, and it made it much, much harder in the actual meeting with a developer present, to be figuring it out as we go. So, this is great. Are you gonna offer the slideshow to us, or do we just have to watch the video again?
I can absolutely send you the link. It's a Google Docs or Google Slides or whatever, so it's easy to share it. And hopefully, when you, you get an application, and I would expect there to be one sometime in the near future, the staff report will make it very clear on what you need to run through as well. We want to help you out as much as possible when we, when we run through applications.
Thank you so much for doing this, Matthew. I yield.
So, Commissioner Noots, I, I have another, I think, benefit to the phased approach, and only because I lived it back in 2007, but you know, there, at one time, there were over 600 lots available in Bozeman in 2008, and you know, right now, we know there's such a huge housing crunch, but I do, I know developers can be somewhat conservative in not binding off more than they can sell to pay off for the infrastructure costs.
Yeah, not to be too disparaging on developers. You can also keep your prices relatively stable for lots if you don't drop 500 lots onto the market all at the same time. So if you sell 30 lots at the same time, it's easier to keep that price of lots steady rather than dropping your own, basically your own profit on yourself by releasing too many lots onto the market.
That's helpful. Thank you.
And then, as far as conditions are concerned, would, would the staff report include recommendations for adding conditions? It would, okay.
Yeah, staff report will always include a list of recommended conditions of approval. Generally, if you see a lot of subdivisions, or if we luckily don't see a lot of subdivisions in Livingston, there'll be a standardized list that you'll see every time, and then additions for specific sites and specific comments made by outside agencies. But usually, they're pretty, pretty standard to just make sure that all the infrastructure and all the requirements have been met and meant to, to take into any concerns from outside agencies. So nothing too complicated with conditions, not for the most part.
But, but I do feel like, and I apologize for interrupting, but I do feel like that's where having me on the planning board and obviously Matthew working together, and ultimately, he's gonna draft the staff report, but I can certainly weigh in on any infrastructure requirements that I feel is necessary, and, and then certainly have that discussion with the other planning board members when, when we go through that approval process.
And definitely when we get an application in, planning department will send that basically immediately to Public Works and the Fire Department at a minimum, just to make sure that there aren't any infrastructure and public safety concerns involved with the application. So you should have some sort of comment letter in your application from Public Works and the Fire Department, and we'll condition based on those as well. With our new infrastructure design center, which are great, that really helps us out as well, because then we can just point to those and say that you shall meet all the requirements in there. There's a few things that we're still needing to work in there, so maybe additional conditions based on those, things like street sections, which we don't really have right now. But as we fill those out, a lot of it will be included in there. And that's helpful for both us and the developers, because they're gonna know exactly what they
The five range.
Hi, Melissa. I was wondering, Matthew, I don't know if it'd be useful for other board members to see, like, the blank version of the findings of facts, like what you start with as a staff person before it's filled out. I don't think everybody on this board has probably seen that, like a blank example. I wonder if, it's probably in the code somewhere, but
Yeah, basically.
If I could just be added to the minutes or something for people to reference later?
I don't have one for subdivisions right now. The best example you can see is use, and you see them a lot on the commissioner, the zoning, the zoning ones where we have those set state criteria. It's the best place for planning board, just to look, look at the last city commission agenda, and you'll see that staff report, and you can look through the whole staff report on, basically, it'll say, here are the state criteria, here's the criteria, and then there'll be a list of staff comments below it. Every staff report essentially will be formatted in that way, just so it's easier for you to walk through those. And then at the end with subdivision, you can't condition the zoning amendment. But at the end with subdivisions, there'll be a basically a list of suggested conditions.
So that was the zone, the zoning for the area near the interstate that just was recently annexed. I'm just letting them know, like, where to find it. It's the area that was near the interstate by that motel, around the motel and that car lot close to Albertson's. Was annexed recently, so it had to be zoned.
I can email one, too. They all look the same, so I'm happy to email one to the board to show you sort of what that's gonna look like. But they'll be for zoning, but it'll be the same with different criteria.
I just thought it was hard, like, to see one for the first time, like, while we were getting ready, like, for the meeting where we were actually going through the process. It's nice to like not see it for the first time when you're doing it.
I appreciate that availability then, to have that beforehand. Anybody else have anything for Matthew? Awesome. Thanks, Matthew, so much for putting that together, and I appreciate you sending out the Google link and the example. That sounds great. Okay, next up is the discussion on planning board's role in growth policy implementation. And so I requested that this be added, just because I was curious about that question. So I don't know, Matthew, if you can help us, help kick off the conversation with your thoughts on that.
Yeah. Basically, the first step, as I've mentioned to you all a couple of times, is going to be the city commission having some sort of strategic planning process. Now that the budget is done, I expect that to happen relatively soon. It would probably be, if the, well, if the planning board would like, it may be beneficial for the commission for the planning board to make a recommendation on sort of what they think their highest priorities are, and something we could discuss. But that's gonna be the first step. That's basically what tells staff, okay, here's what you should be working on, and potentially allocates or lays out the need for funding for certain items. Obviously, there are certain things that are already going on that are included in the growth policy, encouraging ADUs. We have a tiny hall amendment that's will hopefully be on the agenda on the 17th. We're working on a housing plan, we're working on Trails and Active Transportation Plan. So some of the things are already happening, and that's been sort of happening in the background by staff, either before the growth policy was adopted, or sort of right after it got adopted. Jim has been working on updating subdivision regulations to work in our new infrastructure standards and to make it consistent with the growth policy, which is basically going to be requiring the historic block length and width and grid will be required in the subdivision regulations, so you all should see that relatively soon, hopefully in the next couple of months or so. So things are happening, but the where the rubber meets the road, so to speak, is how the commission prioritizes those goals and objectives through the strategic planning process. You know, it's not all gonna be growth policy stuff in the strategic plan as well, so you should be aware of that. The growth policy is competing with other prior, other priorities for the city on what needs to get done, and staff time and funding and all of that, too. So the city commission has a lot of decisions to make, and it's not easy. We are limited in staff and funding.
Can I make a request? When we're ready to have that conversation, or when that conversation starts happening at the city commission, would it be possible for you to help make a list, just like, I don't mean like something super thorough and detailed, I just mean like a quick list of everything that's already moving forward that's in the growth policy, because I know you named a bunch of planning slash building department things, but there is quite a bit in Public Works, I think, that are pretty significant projects that also, while people don't think about the capacity of pipes as a growth issue, it's absolutely a fundamental, like foundational. like foundational first step for what happens above ground. And if we get those grants, that is like significant, significant, like everybody cross everything. That's like significant, large, expensive projects that will have huge amounts of the cost offset through grants. That will be signi, like I can't express how big these could be if they move forward. I think they're pretty massive projects infrastructure wise. And it would be great to like, I'm sure there's some other things that are less expensive and big than what, than those public works projects and the planning, but it might be nice for the planning board to see like how many things are actually moving forward. Cause it's considerable. And I realize as a commissioner, I see it at every meeting, but the planning board doesn't.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, Melissa, because at one point Shannon was giving us a staff update from the public works department, pretty much every planning board meeting as well. And so it would be great to resume those if that makes sense to do so. Not only for our knowledge, but to have it be on the public record, I guess. So if people are viewing this, they can understand all the things that you've got kind of in the hopper. And yeah, I, so I guess what I'm hearing from you, Matthew, is really it's going to the me, the commissioners will be giving the planning board some directive at some point on, on things that they would like the planning board to advise them on. And then perhaps also, at some point, we can have some discussion around what recommendations we would want to elevate up to the commission as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure. It's gonna be up to the commission if they want to give you directive. They may give staff directive as well to do some sort of projects that'll be working with the planning board. It's always tough to give volunteer boards directive on and give them tasks to do. So we'll see what comes out of the strategic planning process, but you all can definitely have input, as can everyone. It's a public process and strategic planning process. And that'll sort of guide staff on potentially moving items forward that may or may not involve the planning board. I think a lot of the, at least from the planning side of things, a lot of the projects we're seeing right now are zoning projects. So they're almost all going through the zoning commission. If we move forward with things like, well, we're doing a couple of plans that you'll see, trails and active transportation and housing. You'll at least have a presentation of those to you. And I would hope be offered the opportunity to make a recommendation to the city commission on whether or not to adopt those. It won't be the full process of going through the plan line by line and editing the whole thing. They'll be pretty complete, if not fully complete, when they come to you as a draft. Not that you can't suggest changes, but there'll probably be more of a, hey, planning board, here's the plan. What do you think of it? Do you want to make a recommendation to the city commission? So you'll see a couple of those in the fall. Go ahead, Melissa.
I, this, I think you raise an interesting question and this conversation is reminding me of something. Jesse, the fundamental, I think this is like a fundamental thing about boards, specifically the planning board. So how things move forward, this is what I'd like to hear from Matthew. So we have this list now, the planning board, like with through this review process, it built out all these details. But the process of implementing strategies into code and ordinances, that doesn't fall on the boards to write the code and ordinances. That falls on like staff and the city attorney really, right? So I guess like if you could explain that process, because I think that's what, I think that's where we get stuck sometimes in Livingston is folks want the planning board to like make things happen, but like we don't actually have the skills and expertise to like be writing the code for reasons like different cities have different charter, like different forms of government, like charter or not charter. And so like you can't just like lift things from one community to the next. Like there's some interesting, there's some interesting history in Livingston that I think is important to understand, like where the process gets solidified and like who does that work? Do you know what I'm saying? I feel like I'm talking in circles, but I think, I think that could be like a fundamental thing to clear up.
Sure. So Livingston was kind of unique when I got here in that all the boards pretty much were writing code. None of them were getting that far with it because not only do they not have potential expertise of staff, but I work 40 hours a week and most boards don't meet 40 hours in a whole year if they're meeting once a month. So it's just a lot harder for them to, to get code done and they're doing it by committee. Often the way that, and really the way that it generally works and sort of the way it's authorized for those boards that are constrained by state laws, the boards are advisory boards. So often, and zoning commission is the best example of this, because we've been working with them a lot on updating the zoning. Staff will bring them either a draft of the zoning and say, hey, what do you think about this? What changes do you want to make? If it's more complicated and we'll go through a process, ADUs, I think we had two or three meetings to adjust the language in there. More often staff will bring them a fully written code with a staff report and ask them if they want to adopt it. They always have the adopt, the option to continue talking about it at the next meeting. They can always continue everything. But basically, the way it works is either the commission will tell the city manager that they want some item completed and then staff will do whatever they need to do and bring that to the appropriate board for a recommendation. So for things like the planning board, really your purview under state law is growth policy plans and transportation and subdivisions. So the city commission dedicated money to a housing plan. So the city has been working with a consultant who's doing a housing plan for both the city and the county. We'll work through that process. We have a steering committee for that. And once we get to the end of that process, we'll bring it to the planning board as an advisory board to advise us on whether they think it's appropriate to recommend to the city commission. The, the board's intent and some of the boards will probably argue with me on this is the intent of the boards is not to do the work of city staff or to do work in general. It's to make recommendations as citizens and as members of the public on whether or not what staff has presented them meets the need and the desires of the public. That's why you have citizen boards is to get that public input when maybe people aren't gonna show up to a meeting. If I, if we just have a meeting and say, hey, we're doing a zoning update to tiny homes, nobody's from the public is gonna show up and make a recommendation on that. So we have a board that has to show up essentially and make that recommendation. Their role isn't to write code. It's not to be staff. It's not to be advocates. It's really to advise the city commission as citizen boards on whether or not what staff, basically what the commission has asked staff to do is appropriate or meets the needs of the public. We've seen the transition away from the city commission directly asking boards to do things, which I think has been a good thing. Large scale retail is a great example of that. I think the planning board started working on that 12 years ago and it's just about to be hopefully completed, basically because the board was writing it themselves and doing research. And if you look at a lot of their research, it's pulled out of California and we can't use a lot of it. At some point, the planning board was asked to write a growth policy. Obviously that didn't work. It's very hard for citizen boards to write these items because they don't have an expertise in writing ordinances, though we have a planning board member that probably has quite a bit of expertise, but generally they don't have this expertise and they don't spend all day looking at city ordinances and they don't spend all day looking at state law. So you end up with codes that can't be adopted. And it's really, really frustrating for a board. And I made the whole zoning commission that right at the beginning, when I started here by saying, hey, a lot of this large scale retail ordinance that you spent a really long time writing is illegal under state law because it interferes with building code and we're not allowed to do that. So you basically have to throw a lot of it in the trash. So coming in after three years of work and saying, hey, you can't do this is really frustrating. It's not a good way for the force to operate. So really that's a very long way of saying, your role is to advise the city commission on, as citizens of, of the city or county or whatever the jurisdiction is that the state finds appropriate, on whether or not staff is achieving the desires of the public based on what the commission has asked them. So for example, it's tough, it's tougher with the planning board than it is with some of the zoning commission because it's less solid. But for example, if the commission asked us to work with the planning board on creating, say, a neighborhood plan, staff would bring either a process or a plan to you. It would probably be a process in this case on how we're going to achieve that neighborhood plan. Often we hire a consultant and they'll work with the public and the planning board to get that process going. And then at the end of that process, after staff will do all the work, basically like you saw with the growth policy, the planning board makes a recommendation to the city commission. Yes, we think this plan is appropriate. It meets the needs of the public. From what we've heard from public input, it's a good plan. Please adopt it. What shouldn't be happening is the commission saying, hey, planning board, write a neighborhood plan. That is asking a whole lot of all of you. And it's not efficient and it's not the right way to do things. So really it's advising us on, hey, staff, are you doing a good job or are you doing a bad job of whatever you've been asking? Is it desirable to the public? I think the boards need to understand that they are the public in this case. They're the representatives of the public. It's not because we don't necessarily get public comment. So you are representing the public for the city. That's why you've been appointed to make those recommendations. And it's, it's a tough position to be in, but as, especially the zoning commission, we have almost never have any public comment on anything yet because it's their role to be that representative of the public to the city commission. And so acceptable, hey, this isn't acceptable. And to make recommendations on changes. So when commission almost always changes at least a little bit or makes recommendations on any zoning we bring to them. So for the tiny home, for example, I had gotten a bunch of calls from the public saying, hey, we want to put a tiny home as an ADU on our property. So I brought them a zoning update that said, hey, let's allow tiny homes as ADUs because they're currently not allowed. You can't have an offsite built structure under 800 square feet in the city. So let's allow that. And basically they looked at it and said, well, you can build a stick built home of the same size as a tiny home. So we think tiny home should be allowed, not only as ADUs, but as primary. So then they make a motion to approve that zoning change with that change. And then staff can agree or disagree with it. Staff generally agrees with it. So then I presented that zoning change to the city commission with the zoning commission changes, including the staff report that I gave to the zoning commission if it's changed and telling the commission, hey, this is what we brought to them. This is the changes that we requested. Staff recommends you accept the requested changes by the zoning commission and approve the zoning change. And that's really their role. And the zoning commission has done a great job of transitioning from writing ordinances to making those recommendations. And it, it works, it works really well. I think it's been a really positive way to do things. And sometimes it takes three, four meetings and that's okay. Because sometimes staff doesn't get it right. And staff is not going to be upset or offended or, you know, whatever, even vindictive. If you all decide, hey, you didn't quite get it right. You know, go back and make these changes. That's, that's totally fine. That's what you're here for.
Thank you. That was really helpful. Go ahead, Melissa.
Yeah, like that's really helpful information to know, right? Because the culture of where we're coming out of to where we to a place that's more productive and moving forward, it's good to know. And I want to just like emphasize and underline that like, this is not like a fault of our boards, that this is the way that it is. This is like the standard for how boards operate. So it's not because our boards are like incapable, because our boards are capable. It was always a staff constraint that we didn't have the capacity staff wise to do the things that Livingston wanted done. So that's why in the strategic plan, we held space for Matthew like however many years ago that that went into this. I think Shannon would remember that was probably a very, the very first time we had a strategic plan. That was probably on it. But so the strategic plan meetings are really important, as are the budget meetings. Like that's where, I know it sounds cliche, but those are places to show up.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both. That's really helpful. And it seems, that makes complete sense to me. So awesome. Anybody have any other comments about this line item in the agenda? All right, let's move on then. We are bringing up something that was on the agenda last meeting. We did not get to continuing discussion on providing a letter to the city commission requesting the city lobby the state to allow for local taxation options. Matthew, you want to give us some background?
Yeah, this was first brought up when that section was scratched from the growth policy. I know we had a very brief discussion last time on whether or not the planning board thought it was appropriate to do so. Whether or not it was in your purview, you could probably make an argument both ways. Taxation does play into planning and especially transportation. But it's taxation is not specifically one of the items listed under state laws in your purview. So I think probably that's the discussion to have today is if, if you think it's in your purview and if you want to, to write some sort of letter asking the city commission to do this. Maybe at the next meeting, we can discuss the contents of that letter or if someone would want to draft a letter, we could do that as well. But you need to decide that you want to do that first. And strictly speaking, it's probably not under your purview and being more liberal with interactions between taxation and planning and transportation, you could make a pretty strong argument that it is. So I'm gonna let you all decide whether, what, basically what you want to do.
Who wants to start?
Okay, I will. I can start since I was the contrary one last time. I do think we need, I do think we need to figure out funding to like make planning sustainable in Livingston. We have big goals and Matthew's only one human as far as we know. And he confirms that he's only one human. So I think if we do some sort of letter, I think it makes sense to go off of what we did in the past. You know, what the commission, I know the commission already agreed to this, what is it, like the gateway, some sort of local gateway option tax variant. I don't remember exactly now what it's called, but Michael, Michael Carter's will remember. And there might be other options from the growth policy beyond just this tax in terms of funding, the sustainable planning slash housing, whatever the vision is. That's for staff, I think, to help us figure out, how do we get from where we are to the community vision? So I think it would be good to put something with funding in there and raise it to the level of the commission. So they're aware there's some options. Cause it'll take a long time to get things moving. It won't happen overnight. Anything with money probably takes like years, right? To figure out and plan for and work into a budget. So our housing problems are not gonna like change overnight just because Matthew's here. So it'd be good to like do some long-term vision planning and make money a part of it. That's all.
I appreciate that, Melissa. And maybe, could I ask a clarifying question? Is some of this tied back to the request? And I can't remember how this all went down, but you know, there's like, the gardener has their tourism tax. And we also put something forward to, to the state legislature to open up gateway to the park. So there was like a handful of counties, maybe ours in Goughton and, and maybe one other asking. And then it got squashed. Correct. The legislature did not pass it. So this is essentially our or please commission, try and bring it back or try and lobby again to the legislature that this is something that we're going to need.
Right. The idea, that's like, this is gonna be a really imperfect summary that I'm about to give. Michael worked on this. And if you, if anybody wants the like exact specifics, I would give him a call. But basically the idea is that being a community located to an, next to a national park, we get an inordinate amount of traffic and visitors through our part of the state. an inordinate amount of traffic and visitors through our part of the state relative to other parts of Montana. So that impacts our infrastructure. For one, it impacts emergency services hugely, right, like fire, police, EMTs, the parent, like all the first responders are in way higher demand in tourist season compared to the rest of the year. And the people that pay for that are the people that live in Livingston, even if we're not the ones that are using the services or impacting the roads at the level to which they're impacted. So the idea with being a community that's impacted more than normal, more than average by tourism, is that if you have a specific type of tax on specific items during that time of year, then tourists will be paying their own share. And we, as Livingston residents, will not be offsetting the costs and giving like tourists a break for impacting the infrastructure that we pay for. Does that make sense? And that is like a totally imperfect generalization of the concept.
No, that is perfect. And that is as I remember it. So thanks. And so any, so is there any inclination of the commission doing this anyway? Is there a reason why we should be writing a letter convincing the commission to do this?
I, so that was one thing that I would ask the commission. There's other tools, independent of what I just talked about, to help us fund the things that need to be funded to get to the vision that we're imagining in the growth policy. There are a whole bunch of tools out there that we don't have access to. Probably some of it requires a charter form of government, which is going to be on the ballot. So I would want, and I think Matthew probably knows those things because this is literally his job. There's probably things that we could also include in terms of funding because that is one thing we could do as a planning board is say, hey, commission. Because Matthew already brought this up, like we, the commission meetings are thinking about so much more than just what the planning board does. And there are things we vote on that have no attachment to any board. So like, what are there, like six boards, five boards that we vote on, things that come through or that touch the boards? Plus, there's a whole slew of topics that have nothing to do with any board. So I think the point, Jesse, of bringing it up to the commission is just like a friendly reminder because it's really hard to remember things from two years ago when you vote on, I don't know, fifteen things and every two weeks. So if the commission remembers, you know, but like by the time the next legislative session will happen, there's an election on the commission between now and then. So I don't even know who will be on the commission the next time there's a legislative session. So that's one thing that's nice for the boards is that like continuity and like moving things forward while commissioners are coming and going and there's different priorities popping up outside of planning. That would be my thought behind it.
Go ahead, Taya.
Question for Matthew. So you said you could kind of argue it both ways, whether it's in our purview. What would be the the other group or individual whose purview it would be?
Probably straight city commission. There's not a board. We don't have a taxation board. Shannon's waving his hand. The reason it would be under the planning board's purview, which I think is why Shannon's waving his hand around is taxation really does affect infrastructure, financing, funding, which transportation and the rational planning of cities is under your purview, which is where the connection is. There's not a direct board in the city. There's no like city taxation board or someone that deals with that. Sometimes in larger cities, you'll see something like that. So there wouldn't really be a board that has that. If you very strictly read it, there wouldn't be a board that had that sort of directs purview other than the city commission choosing what they would like to direct the city manager to lobby the state for. They want to lobby things directly as well. So yeah, it would just, it would basically be planning board saying, hey, this is connected to planning and transportation. So we wanted to remind the city commission or ask the city commission to make sure that the city lobbies for increased funding potentially options for the city to pursue planning and transportation items.
Shannon, did you want to comment with your wave or?
I was, I was just agreeing. I mean, I'm definitely supportive of any increased revenue that our own residents don't have to pay for transportation, emergency services. I do know, you know, I just spent three days in Whitefish at a music festival and the traffic up in Whitefish, Columbia Falls, Kalispell's unreal. I stayed at an RV park. I paid about six dollars a day for a bed tax. I do know some communities do put some of their bed tax back into transportation improvements based on the rationale that Matthew mentioned earlier. So, you know, I did have a discussion with Chris King, who oversees the L bed and the T bed. And I know, I know there's a lot of good things being planned and spent with our bed tax. It's just, in my opinion, it's not enough. So you know, I'm supportive of anything. I'm not sure the timing right now, just given that we're coming out of a legislative session is great, but I think knowing how awesome of a board we have, if and when the appropriate time is to reach out to our city commission and even local legislature and politicians on our own private level, I think is a good thing. I, but I think there's probably more pressing things right now that we need to be probably focusing on than writing a letter of support for taxation when, when we just, we just came out of a session that basically made those decisions for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, I agree on timing. You know, it doesn't necessarily make sense now, but maybe once the new commissioners are elected would be maybe the appropriate time. But, you know, I'll just say I'm supportive of, of, of writing a letter from our, you know, from the planning board, if that's something the planning board agrees upon, because I do agree that it would be to the benefit of our community if we were able to recoup some of that cost from the tourists that use those roads and not be taking it out. Plus, we have a lot of, our growth policy has a very big vision and we want, we would like to see it come to fruition and that takes funding. So. Go ahead, Melissa.
My only thought is if we're thinking beyond a tax and we're thinking about strategic plan priorities, some of those priorities and Shannon will know, some of those priorities are planned quite a few years out, I think. With like a five-year plan, but it's like a living document that's always sort of every year we're adding. So I mean, there is things could be added potentially to the strategic plan, not as like the highest priority, but as a holding place for like three years down the road or whatever. I think we have some items like that. And of course, they shift and change over time depending on competing interests, but that's my only thought.
And I do, and I think that's a great point. Commissioner Newt, I do think if you look at our current strategic plan, it does look at alternate funding sources and, you know, the gateway tax certainly was one of those. And I think there's other opportunities there. So I think as we meet on a monthly basis and we get to that point, I don't think it hurts providing a recommendation from the planning board that we support those options at looking at alternative funding.
Could I like just make a request then? So when the time is right, could you, like Shannon and Matthew, because it goes to staff before it goes to the commission, like staff works on everything before it goes to the commission. So when the time is right and it's on your radar that we're interested in certain topics, could you bring it up that now is the time for it to be back on a planning board agenda? That might be it. Okay, if that makes sense.
That sounds like it would be super helpful. Okay, anybody else have anything else to comment on for this line item on the agenda? Awesome. Thanks for that discussion. I appreciate bringing that back. Oh, gosh, let's continue our discussion on in-person meetings. Matthew, do you want to preemptively say anything about in-person meetings?
Commission has gone back to in-person meetings. I know we talked about a hybrid option. It sounds like it's going to be several months. The city and the county seem to be pursuing that option pretty aggressively at a joint, basically jointly. But it sounds like it's a big project and may take potentially until the beginning of next year. Basically, I have to set up an entire AV room with a whole bunch of IT infrastructure. So I don't know if we want to wait that long to go back to in-person meetings until there is a hybrid. But I will leave it to you all to decide how you want to meet. Yeah, it's, it's up to you. There's no specific mandate from the commission asking all the boards to go back in person. And there hasn't been any sort of directive from city administration. So at this point, at least, it is still on the boards to decide whether or not they want to go back.
Okay, who wants to go first? What do you guys think about it? Go ahead, Shannon.
Well, based on our earlier discussion, there's a, I think there's a great opportunity that there's not going to be an August meeting. So I know I'm fully vaccinated and I would be comfortable exploring going back to face-to-face meetings in September. And I, I will say, I didn't participate in last night's city commission meeting, but I did go to the first in-person meeting in early July and I felt like the meeting went a lot quicker than it has historically through the Zoom meeting platform. So I think there is a benefit in efficiency of our time by going back to in-person as well. And so those are my thoughts.
Can I just build on that quickly? Shannon talked about efficiency. It looks like the commission may expand this board to nine people. So efficiency may be something you all want to consider pretty significantly.
Noted. Anybody else? Taya?
I'll chime in. I'm open to going back to in-person meetings, although I never, I'm not going back to them because I never have been at an in-person meeting with all of you. It's more of a question on the county side because we are debating, you know, we had just given how spread out people are in the county. Zoom kind of provided an opportunity for people to participate, but given the city, I think it's less of an issue.
Melissa or Tori, do you guys have any thoughts one way or the other? Tori?
I, I do appreciate the fact that Zoom helps the logistical access for a lot of people. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to and would, would strongly support the hybrid option when, when that is feasible. But as far as, and for the time being, I also am vaccinated and comfortable meeting together with all of you. So and I will look forward to that.
Melissa, do you want to comment?
I, I'm really happy that the, the big plans are underway, you know, as a commissioner, like in long term. I think that's I think that's important for lots of reasons that that plan is happening for beyond the pandemic. I think that we're in a situation where things are opening back up and some of us have different people in our families with different risks. So we have to just like, even if we're vaccinated, mask up in public. And I think that that's fine. That we just have to like do our best as we can moving forward. And I do think, wasn't there ventilation added to that community room? Or is it like a portable ventilation? I mean, there were some things that were done to help make it a safer space regardless. Do you know if that was integrated into the building, Shannon, or if that was like, just like a thing that was put in the room?
I, I am not exactly sure on that. I, I'm aware that there is a, like an air purifier system, but I think it's a portable system. I'm not sure if it's integrated in the whole HVA sys, HVA system, HVAC system. But, you know, I think it's a large enough room and just like tonight with no members of the public and we can social distance and be comfortable. But, you know, e- even if we do have a subdivision review, I, I do think there's adequate space to, to mask up and socially distance in that room and still, and still be productive in an in-person meeting.
Thanks. I haven't, because I don't work for the city, I wasn't tracking all of the things like you would be tracking. But I know that a lot of the spaces were improved because the city staff still had to meet, even if the commission didn't go in person. So I'm comfortable with the majority. Whatever the majority wants to do, I'm comfortable with. And I agree with Tori that the hybrid option is great when we're ready, when the, when the equipment's there.
Yeah, and I'll say the same thing. So I, my situation is a solo parent home with a couple of elementary school-aged kids. So I, I get a sitter for my planning board meetings anyway. I am now no longer willing to give up another night with my children on a Tuesday. So I don't attend commission meetings anymore. So I'm sad about that. So I read about it or I listen to them on YouTube. But I am also comfortable and vaccinated to meet in person and have also never met in person with a planning board, except for my interview for being on the planning board. So that is how I came on the, the month the pandemic hit. So I'm happy to do that, but I also do agree and, and looking forward to the hybrid option because I do think just given the mass amount of participation we had through the growth policy and just my own personal sadness that I, you know, I'm not willing to kind of give up cooking dinner in front of like a city commission meeting. I, I'm looking forward to the time when we can have that hybrid model. So I can, I can show back up more often. But do we need to, so that's kind of my comments on that. Do we need to vote on this? No, it's just a conversation. So where, so do we need to vote on having, not having an August meeting?
Let's talk about that quickly. Let's make, so I don't have anything for you for the next meeting. There's no way we're going to get a subdivision in at this point that could possibly be on the next meeting. The only thing that we potentially could discuss would be if there's a strategic planning process happening potentially in September, we may want to meet. If you all don't feel the need to meet, we can just decide to not meet unless there is a strategic plan. And then we can sort of, I can email you all and say, hey, do you all want to meet? Really need a couple of days' notice. So we don't need that much advanced time to just have a meeting. We can also hold a special meeting if we need to either basically the one privilege of the chair, other than running the meetings, is that she can call a special meeting unilaterally. So we can always do that. We'll probably ask all of you anyway. But at this point, if you all don't mind, I know there's people on vacation. It's August. People want to spend their Wednesday afternoons outside. Some of us have meetings the night before. I'm happy not to have a meeting when we don't have much to talk about, unless one of you has something you want to talk about. And then we can do that.
No, I will not, I will not be present in August regardless. I will be sitting on the beach. So, sorry. Okay, well, anybody else have anything they want to put on it? Any strong feelings about August? Okay. Does this require a motion to skip August? And all right, we're skipping August. But we do need to, on the September But we do need to on the September, uh, think about um, a vice chair, correct? So that needs to go on our agenda for September and then, um. And it also sounds as if we have made the decision uh, to hold our September meeting in person. Um. Anything else we need to cover on those two topics? Okay. Um, do we have any final board comments before we? Um. Start to wrap things up? Any uh, staff co- comments, um, Matthew, that you want to make before we wrap things up?
Yes, we have a open house for the Trails and Active Transportation Plan on the twenty ninth. Uh, that is being held at the Civic Center and I believe the time is three to six. Uh, we're also doing a public bike ride as well, so check our Facebook page for that. I think that's the day before. Um, unfortunately, my door is closed, so all my dates have moved to the other side of the door. Um, but so we're doing that next week, so if you want to be involved in the Trails and Active Transportation Plan. Uh, get involved, come show up to the meeting, uh, send me an email. I can send you exact times and locations. But definitely, uh, the open house on the twenty ninth, which is in, will be in the Civic Center Gym, should be really interesting. Uh, they basically compiled the list of top priorities for both trails and transportation improvements. Uh, and will be taking comments on those, so uh, it should be, should be great if you all want to, to look at that and be there and make comments.
Great. For some reason I had five thirty to six PM on my calendar for the twenty ninth. But it sounds like it's just an open house and everybody can just show up and make comment. Okay, I don't know why I had that time slot in there.
Let me get the exact times here for you very quickly. Uh, so five thirty to seven is the public meeting on the twenty ninth and that's at the Civic Center Gym. And the community bike ride is on Saturday, the thirty first, uh, nine AM to noon and that starts at the Yellowstone Gateway Museum. And it will be a slow-paced sort of talking, describing, uh, meet rides. I don't think you need to be a professional bike rider or anything like that. It will be very mellow, so. Definitely encourage everyone to come to that. It should be, should be great. It should be really interesting. Hopefully it's not too far on Saturday.
Okay, so there is an open house at the Civic Center from three to six and then there's actually a, an active transportation meeting from five thirty to seven on the twenty ninth?
No, so the open house is five thirty to seven. I think three to six was a different meeting. I'm getting my meetings confused. So it's at five thirty to seven at the Civic Center Gym on the twenty ninth. They'll be taking input basically on. And showing the maps and all of that. So uh, if you do want to show up, it would be great to, to get your input.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Um.
Matthew, I, I think. Were you, were you referring to the highway meeting? On the twenty ninth from three to six?
That's another thing. MDT is holding a meeting on the, and thank you for reminding me, uh, is holding a meeting on. The same date, the twenty ninth, three to six. I'm not quite sure where that one is. Taya, do you know? Um, basically the plan is to widen eighty-nine south. Uh, to add what I call a suicide lane, but that sort of center turn lane down to. Uh, basically the mouth of the canyon, the East River Road. Um, and they, that construction is slated to start uh, basically next spring, so they're taking input on that as well. And that's where the three to six meeting.
It's at the Park County Fairgrounds.
Do they consult with our city staff? I'm guessing they've talked to Shannon.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Newt, uh, I'm aware of the project. It, it basically starts at basically our south city limits. At Travertine Lane and then extends out of the city, but we've certainly, um, been able to look at things and provide comments for that project.
Awesome. That's what I was hoping you would say. Thanks, Shannon.
Okay, uh, next meeting date is actually sometime in the middle of September. Um, I don't know what the date would be. Let's see.
September fifteenth would be the meeting date.
September fifteenth, okay, perfect. Um, all right, well, anything else before we say goodnight? Awesome. All right, always a pleasure to see everyone. Sounds like we'll see you all in person, if not beforehand on September fifteenth. Weird, but that's the next one. So, okay, we'll adjourn the meeting. It is seven oh eight PM. Thanks everybody so much for your attendance and uh, your continued support of planning in the city of Livingston.
Have a good August, everyone.
Yep, take care, stay cool out there.